All right, it is six o'clock and I'll call the order of the city, there's a hot springs meeting of the city council, the city council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for April 21st, 2020. This is our 6:00 PM regular session, roll call please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Crescent.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Tonight for invocation, we have Pastor Johnson from Lillia Valley. Are you there Pastor?
Uh, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, good.
All yours.
Gracious Father, we just want to take time to say thank you. Thank you for just being God and loving your people. We want you God to look on those who have lost loved ones. Over forty-five thousand have lost their loved ones to the coronavirus. So we ask you to comfort those families. But Lord, we also want to thank you for the seventy-five thousand that has recovered from the coronavirus here in the United States. Lord, I'm asking you to place your angels around the, those that are on the front lines, those firemen, those policemen and those nurses, those doctors that are giving their all just for the sake of humanity and for the love of people. So encamp your angel around them and give them peace in the midst of this turmoil. Lord, we actually, we're praying for our president, city councils, Congress, Senate. Now we actually look on us all. Lead us and guide us in the direction that you would have for us to go. But most of all, Lord, we just want to say we love you. And because of your love, we have made it this far. So look on the mayor, look on all those that are doing their best to help those that are unfortunate, that do not have. Thank you for those that are passing out the food and giving directions to those that do not have direction. So therefore, God, look on us for our effort. Bless our efforts. Make sure that we have the resources that we need to be able to comfort those that are without. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much Pastor. At this time, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Betts, would you lead us tonight?
Yeah, okay, everybody, please place your hand over your heart and join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America where which it stands. One nation, under God.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Somebody forgot I was lying in there. Indivisible, I forgot the word indivisible.
Thank you very much, both Pastor and Mr. Betts. I'll move on to the approval of the agenda at this time. City council may amend the order, the agenda, approve the consent calendar, remove any items from the consent calendar and so forth. Any items from the consent calendar need to be removed tonight? Do I have any public comments on the consent calendar?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Entertainer motion?
So moved, we accept the agenda?
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Betts.
You're mooted Ross.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith.
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis.
Aye.
We want to, oh sorry, go ahead Gerald.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to public comments. It's time pursuant to Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Tonight, we obviously have some extraordinary circumstances. Gerald, would you explain some of your public comments and what you'll be doing?
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we did receive written public comments from a Mr. Brad Anderson. So I distributed, distributed that to the city council. That'll be part of the record and then also available upon request by anyone who would request it. We do have Jessica Gilbert here to speak under public comments.
All right, Jessica, you got three minutes.
Hey, I just wanted to let everyone know that our Thursday normal rotary meeting at noon, we are privileged to have Denise Hammett, the new economic director, economic development director speaking, as well as Greg Rodriguez from the office of Manny Perez. And if anybody would like to join the meeting, obviously it's public. My cell number is seven six zero eight three one two two five nine. And you can text me and I'll be able to send you, anyone the link. So we, the more the better and you'll have questions and we have two wonderful speakers. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Anything, any other public comments tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to city manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few things tonight. First, I'd like to start with Danny. We'd like to get our regular update on the Palm Drive paving project, if you would Danny.
Yes, thank you Chuck. Actually received a couple of concerns today about the traffic signal timing, so I'm gonna start with that. We had a traffic signal timing issue on Palm Drive that we observed today. There was Palm Drive between, I'm sorry, Palm Drive on Camino Ventura and Camino Campaniero. We actually called Siemens out there to make sure there wasn't any malfunctions. During this construction, we actually removed the traffic signal loop detectors. So we can continue and complete the project. Those will be installed this Thursday. Since then, we've actually adjusted the, the timing on there to control as much as we possibly can during the time that we didn't have any loops. Siemens went out today and actually confirmed that there was no malfunction and still are timing the way we intended to time during construction. We ran into some problems at the beginning where the traffic was not flowing correctly in and out of the city. So what we did is we extended the timing for the north and south to extend the maximum possible of fifty seconds. And we confirmed today that the Camino Campaniero is still fifty seconds north and south. The westbound is eighteen seconds. Camino Ventura is also fifty seconds north and south. And westbound is fifteen seconds. What that does alleviates the traffic going in and out during traffic jams in the morning and in the afternoon. Now this Thursday, we do have the loop detectors are gonna get installed and that will help complete the, the entire traffic detection and timing cycle. So we'll definitely improve traffic on that segment. Which takes me to the Palm Drive projects. That Palm Drive project is an ATP cycle three project. That was from Camino Ventura to two bunch palms. The asphalt rehab was completed two weeks ago. The striping was completed last week along with some of the manhole or raising manhole adjustments. This Thursday, the signal loops will be completed and the final punch list has already started and we expect to finish that in two weeks. The Palm Drive Streetlight Project, which is our phase two of this one, which extends from two bunch palms to Pearson. That one, we had a one week closure last week, which we completely removed all the asphalt and base between Pearson and Desert View. The first lift of asphalt was installed and the, the roads reopened on Friday at 5:00 PM. So everything ran as scheduled. We had no incidents on that. And we just want to thank everybody for, for some of the tours that we had going on. Grinding continued this week. The outside lane began yesterday on the west side of Palm Drive. Lanes will be closed, the outside lanes, inside lanes are will continue to go on this week for various segments of Palm Drive. I expect some delays in some of the lane closures through this week and next week. We also have our traffic signal project which has been ongoing. We, our contractor was potholing and running utility lines on Palm and Desert View and Pearson and Choya. We did have one major incident last week on Pearson and Choya. A utility line that was not properly marked by one of the utilities was, was hit annoyingly by our contractor. We immediately assessed situation, utility shut up and we did repair the utility line and have continued working. Unfortunately, it did cause a temporary water shut off for, for the time being, the repairs. And there was the temporary road closures. Everything has been reopened, everything is functioning normal now. Since then, we met with our utilities and we have double, we asked them to double check every single utility that's marked to make sure it prevent this happening in the future. That's all we have and I'll send it back to Chuck.
Thanks Danny. I'd also, I'd like at this point to go to Doria Williams, the Assistant City Manager. Talk a little bit about the current response to COVID-19 and what the city's doing.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor, City Council. So as the city manager just mentioned, I just want to provide a couple of updates to, to the mayor and city council and to the community. At this point, the county has started to draw back on some of the restrictions that have been in place. So most recently, some new restriction, I'm sorry, some new guidelines have come out updating the county orders that now allow golf courses to open back up for limited use. That includes four or less players per group. People must continue to practice social distancing, wear face covers. And in addition to that, there's added language within that, those new guidelines that allows for small groups that are practicing social distancing to use parks, trails, golf courses for walking and exercise activities. So with that in mind, the city is going to dial back on some of our restrictions effective tomorrow. So effective tomorrow, we will be opening the dog parks back up to the public. We will also be opening up the open space within our parks. And we also will be opening the walking path at Mission Springs Park for the community's use. I do want to reiterate that the playground equipment, picnic benches and public restrooms are still going to be, they will remain closed to the public. And we will continue to open things up as permitted by the county. So some good news that we're starting to be able to open up some of these restrictions that were in place. And, and like I said, that'll be effective tomorrow morning that you'll see those spaces open back up. Thank you so much and I will put it back to you Chuck.
Thanks Doria. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you for that update. At this time, we'll move on to mayor and council member reports and comments. Let's start with Jan Pye tonight.
Okay, I just want to say people should get some pens. But starting with the mayor, he started Project Runkey. And part of that was to purchase hotel rooms. And I just wanted to say the last thing that I talked about with the hotel here, we're not purchasing a hotel room. What we're doing is different. The occupants are pregnant women, people that are disability, have disabilities and senior centers, senior citizens. And coming in right after that is Path to Life, which is attempting to find people permanent homes. I went to the study session and the general meeting of the MSWD, Mission Springs Water District. And they are going to contract to prevent leaks during an earthquake. There's one particular well, I guess, that they need to construct. And so they are going to do that. They don't want a pandemic and then there's an earthquake and then another thing happens. Also, the staff of MSWD and the board are contributing to the United Way to help people who are unable to pay bills. And this is for seventy-five dollars per bill for twelve months. They are not taking the money from rates. They are taking the money from towers that they receive. They're putting in ten million dollars for the towers and volunteers can go to www.unitedwayofthedesert.org. And when you get there, go to our work, go to finance, financial stability and then you'll be able to fill out an application. That's www.unitedwayofthedesert.org. Additionally, you have heard that anybody can be tested without a doctor's permit per Riverside County. The telephone number for that is eight hundred nine four five six one seven one. Also, we have to participate in the twenty twenty census. What this means for us is there's six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars of federal funding that gets spent. And we want to be part of that. So if you haven't or don't know where, what you did with your twenty twenty census, you can go to www twenty twenty census.gov. www twenty twenty census.gov. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We're going on, Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I wanted to say thanks and good job to our public work staff who've been doing yeoman's work during this crisis out constantly replacing the fencing and things around the playgrounds and making sure that our, our playgrounds and the parks are, are still off limits and doing a lot of trimming and weeding and roadwork and things like that. And it, they've got the time and the, and the less traffic to do it now and the city's looking good and they're out there working hard with their masks on and, and I really appreciate it and they're doing, they're doing a great job at this time. Also wanted to, to just say thank you to our folks here in, in the city, our residents for being as diligent as they are, sticking with the stay at home orders, you know. It's been tough on all of us. And it's gonna be that way for a little while longer, but I see some great signs of our community here. People helping their neighbors, cottage industries bringing up, for doing delivery for people that need delivery. And even sewing fashionable masks. I've got a few of them here I've picked up, so. And neighbors just helping each other. It's been great to see that. We do see our number of cases in the valley and in county and in state rising still. But the doubling rate has slowed, which means that social distancing measures are working. And we have to keep this up for just a little while longer, it looks like. We can't let our foot off the gas yet. And I know everyone is anxious to get back to normal. Trust me, I'm with you as all and we will all get back to normal soon. If we keep this up, it'll happen sooner rather than later. It's premature to be relaxing our social distancing, our mask wearing, our staying in place orders. Doing so now, I think, would, in my mind and in the opinion of our, of our health experts, lead to a greater increase in cases and bringing back strict stay at home orders later this summer, which we really don't want. So, you know, the best analogy I, I can give is that, you know, we've gone skydiving and the parachute opened and we're drifting slowly back down to earth and as we get closer and our rate of descent slows, we can say, oh hey, let's toss off the parachute. We've slowed down now. It's the wrong approach to take. So I'm just hoping folks will stick with this a little while longer. It is working. We can see that. We'll be over this sooner rather than later. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be attending Sunline meeting tomorrow, have Airport Land Use Commission next week. And then I guess Jan and I are gonna be telecommuting together to scag up there on the first of the month. I got a couple of questions and then a few comments. I'm trying to get the schedule for budget meetings. You know, when we're gonna be having those? Do we have an answer on that one? Have we got a schedule together yet? No, we're actually working on the budget and we'll get together the, the budget calendar, get that ready for you. Okay, normally, you know, other council members have been in budget meetings already. They probably regret that they did because they're having to go back and rework everything, but obviously, we're gonna need some revised numbers. And I was hoping to see some of that by this meeting. So if we could get something to the council sooner than later, that would be very good. I don't think we're gonna get hit as hard as the other cities that are gonna have dire consequences. You can already see some of that. But we're gonna have significant budget impacts and the sooner we plan for that, the better. You know, weeks ago, I was getting calls from people, hey, do you know where we can get help? Where do we get signed up for these benefits that are coming? And now I'm getting calls from people with a little bit more desperation in their voice. You know, hey, when's the help I signed up for gonna get here? And, you know, we've had a lot of promises that are made and they've all seemed to evaporated. You got, you know, we're into week five for a lot of these business owners. The SBA helped fizzled. They didn't have nearly enough money to take care of that. The payroll protection program, that evaporated quick. Then you got an unemployment debacle going on for the small shop owners, the gig workers, independent contractors. Where, you know, they were told make application. And a bunch of them did and they all sat around waiting and they're in this process, but it turns out the process wasn't the correct one. So while they're sitting there going, hey, I did everything I thought I was supposed to. Where's my benefits? They were getting pieces of paper in the mail that said zero benefit available to you and they thought, oh, I guess I don't qualify. Well, it turns out from what I'm able to find out now that April 28th is the date for gig workers, independent contractors, small business owners, sole proprietors to apply at the economic development website. It's on the COVID-19 main page. And what you wanna look for is pandemic unemployment assistance. Those are the keywords you wanna look for on that page. And without going into too much of this, you can go look at that, but they're offering thirty-nine weeks of benefits going back, I think as far as February 20th, it's supposed to be retroactive. And apparently they'll have the same six hundred dollar a week extra check that everybody else did. But we'll see, the benefits are supposed to be retroactive. I don't know, there's three hundred million small businesses in this country and states like Pennsylvania are already accepting these applications and doing these, what's under the CARES Act. They're already implemented that. California is a little bit behind on that. So, and then, you know, for the unemployed who are applying for benefits, I don't know if anybody's tried calling down there just to check and see if you can get through. And the line's been pretty much busy, even though they extended the hours. So I don't know what's you know, gonna take place with that, but something needs to change. The only thing I'm gonna say here is that just editorializing a little bit. First, I really want to thank Eduardo Garcia's office for providing help. I mean, they're really been good at picking up the phone, answering questions. And Denise Hammett in our office, I've gotten so many compliments from people on the help that you've provided, you know, along the lines of, oh my God, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, you know, big shout out to our staff too. We are really working hard on this and I know it's probably really frustrating for you as well as for the people you're helping, but you're doing great things for them. So thank you very much. You know, the way I'm looking at this thing is, the analogy I'd use is we're in a book. It's a ten chapter book. And a whole bunch of other countries, particularly in Asia, are on chapter eight or nine. And we're maybe on chapter five or six. And we can see that all, Asia's already opened up. Australia just announced they're opening up. You get a whole list of countries in Europe, Denmark, Czechoslovakia, France, Italy, Spain, they're all announcing opening up around May 1st. And it's really good to see the county starting to take a look at this. And I understand the calls from people saying, hey, we gotta be careful, you know, this thing's deadly. Nobody appreciates that more than I do. You know, we've been very, very careful in our family. But man, when people start missing cancer screenings because they can't get out and all the other things that come along, the, you know, there's a very real serious cost to this poverty that's going on. So I, I don't think there's enough money in the federal government. Two trillion dollars pissed away or, you know, evaporated really quick. And now they're doing another two trillion or five hundred billion a day and it's all gonna disappear just as quick. The only way to get ourselves out of this is to get things opened up and we need to do it cautiously. And I know there's people out there that's cringing at the thought of somebody saying we need to start opening up. The operative word is cautiously, carefully, everybody wear masks. And I'll get off of that soapbox right now and just leave it at, we gotta follow, there's other countries going ahead of us on this. We can watch them, watch their experience and we can follow, same thing, but there are people really starting to hurt. There's desperation of people's voices. And man, if this goes on much longer, it's gonna be a very serious deadly crash that comes along. Really good news to hear, we've got the parks open and at least the extent that people can walk in them, in the dog park. So that was good news tonight. And so let's see, go. Mr. City Manager, do we have any idea on the, how the city hall is going? Is we gonna be, is that gonna be our next meeting place when we get done with the Brady Bunch meetings here?
We're hoping to. We're still struggling a bit with deliveries from outside the country. We have some chairs coming from Canada and as long as the the borders are locked, that's an issue. We have some furniture coming from Indiana that their, their shops are closed right now, so they're not building that furniture. And we also have some situations where some of the contractors aren't working during this period of time. And therefore, that's slowing things down a bit, but we are very close. As you've seen it, it looks great. And we're hoping that by mid to late summer, we'll be holding council meeting there and doing business as usual again.
Okay, great. Well, good job that everybody on the staff's doing that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Griffith?
I don't really have much. I've been, again, still kind of fortunate. Most of my committees and commissions have still been on hiatus. It appears that they are starting to come back. I do have a C-Vet board meeting tomorrow morning and several others this week. Did have a meeting with Doria Williams and also with Rebecca Demme going over the general plan updates. It's pretty detailed. I know that they're meeting with everybody. And then we will get all the information. We can really take a look at it. It looks like it's, they've done a great job at updating it and making it kind of at a loss for the word, I want to say, kind of concise and, and not as kind of like mix and match all over the map. So I think they have some nice contiguous areas and it's well thought out. I look forward to getting the package so I can actually look at it in detail and study it. It's gonna take a couple of days. I know everybody's probably had those meetings and looking forward to that. Other than that, I don't have much to say. I don't have a soapbox and I will just pass that on to you.
Everyone, I'll give a quick report tonight. I did have quite a few meetings via Zoom. Everybody's learning how to use Zoom as we are tonight. Supervisor President's office gave an update last week and I was kinda hoping that they would continue these updates weekly, but I guess the county's been quite overwhelmed. Some of the issues with the mayors has been that the information from the county hasn't been distributed fast enough through the cities. Most of the, the time that the city gets the information is sometimes minutes before the press does. So it doesn't allow us to prepare. So I'm hoping in the future, this is a a good sign that the, the county will start to really look at involving the individual cities a little more than they had in this, this crisis. Riverside County Transportation Commission did have a meeting via Zoom and nothing pertained directly to the city, to the city of Hot Springs. We did host another webinar from healthcare. We had Linda Evans who works for the Desert Care Network and she's also the mayor of La Quinta. And we had Gray Mark Reedus from Supervisor President's office to talk about healthcare and the participants and that is rerunning on our YouTube and I believe channel seventeen. And you can, you can find it on Facebook, the city's Facebook page. The Sebag Association of Governments, Showtime Association of Governments had a committee meeting, which was the admin and meeting they have once a year. I do sit on that subcommittee, so I was able to make some recommendations, which will go to the executive committee. Every Tuesday, I've been having weekly calls with the
Every Tuesday, I've been having weekly calls with the faith-based organizations, food programs, and service clubs, trying to make sure that everyone is getting all the resources they need and be able to get the collaboration that needs to be done when these food programs don't work together. A lot of times, they're doubling up. So what is great about it is we've actually come up with helping people shut-ins. Rotary and the Senior Center and Food Now are working closely, and possibly some faith-based organizations joining in soon. They are going to be able to serve the shut-ins with food if they need or other supplies. So that's really great. And I want to give a shout out to Jessica Gilbert with Rotary, who actually helped put together that program with the Senior Center. She was fantastic on coming up with some of those ideas and how they're going to form that program. And the collaboration between the Senior Center and Food Now has been perfect. Also want to give a shout out to Pastor Keefion Shepherd, who continues to serve food at the homeless and other needy families. They've been serving, I think, this week alone, they served 45. And that's on top of what Food Now is doing, 440 families this week. And St. Elizabeth's Church, it's just amazing how many families are in need out there, as talked about by some of the council members here tonight, and how our community's coming together to serve those. Desert Hot Springs has been very fortunate. We've only had 27 cases so far reported in the county, which is behind Ranch Mirage, just behind, or just above Ranch Mirage and Indian Wells. So we're the third lowest in the Coachella Valley on cases here. I believe that's because, as Councilmember Gardner said, that people are adhering to the stay-at-home orders. And I really do appreciate and thank the city of Desert Hot Springs for listening to those. Still, some of the highest cases are coming from the ages of 18 to 64, which is mostly the working-class individuals. And I do believe, because they're out there and in the public, that's why the cases are happening. We are shielding the seniors, which is helping quite a bit. We've also got to remember our middle-aged and younger folks. We've got to really make sure that this doesn't get out of control in the future, which is why the city of Desert Hot Springs, and I want to thank the city manager's office for putting together a plan that, what we call opening Desert Hot Springs back up. As the governor's talked about opening California, and the counties have talked about opening the county back up, we have to also adhere to that and get Desert Hot Springs back open. So as the county relieves these orders and the state relieves orders, we're able to open your amenities back up here in Desert Hot Springs, i.e. such as the dog parks will be tomorrow, the walking pass. And hopefully, over time, this will all get to whatever norm's going to be in life pretty soon. We will be having another webinar tomorrow, Wednesday, the 22nd. And that's going to be focused on food programs. So if you know someone in need or have questions about the food programs here in Desert Hot Springs, I believe some of the panelists will be Food Now, Keefion Shepherd, who talked about the homeless problem or programs here in town, and Food Now, Dana Johnson, and Melanie Lyons from the Senior Center, talking about some of the needs of our community. And I hope that you can join us. If you can't, we'll rebroadcast that for you tomorrow. It's at 2:00. It'll be live, and you can join and ask questions if you choose to. And then maybe you can forward that to friends and family that might need these, those questions answered, on how to get assistance. Sometimes people are just shy about it, other times they just don't know. And these are opportunities for people to make sure that they are getting the services and food that they need for their families. The State of the City will be postponed. It's, we do it each May. And because of our schedules and everything else, the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce has decided to postpone the State of the City, most likely moving it to the end of summer to make sure that we're out of this and that we're able to gather again. And if not, we might even move it further and/or do it via conferencing. But those decisions we made towards the middle of summer, at this time, it'll be delayed. And then our meeting schedule, I know I've had quite a few questions on some of our meeting schedule. We're trying to make sure that we keep on track with our general plan, as Mayor Proten alluded to, one-on-one meetings with our staff. And then we're moving that towards public hearings here soon, and hopefully keep into that track of meetings that we really wanted to keep to. Same with our strategic plan for the marijuana and cannabis industries. We'll be working on those here soon again. So we're trying to get back on track. We might be maybe a couple of weeks to a month behind on some of our scheduling in the past. But for the most part, we're getting caught back up, and staff's doing a wonderful job working from home for the most part. So I want to thank each and every one of them. That's all I've got tonight. I'm going to move on to the agenda. We have four items on our administrative calendar tonight. And our first item is a resolution of intent for placing Desert Valley Disposal annual billings for the service of residential properties on the county tax rolls fiscal year 2020-21. And this can be our finance director, Jeffrey Buchan.
Well, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. The city has agreed to put the solid waste disposal billings for the residential accounts on the county tax roll on behalf of Desert Valley Disposal. For the fiscal year 2021, the levy is estimated to be at $2,519,280.25, which is about $104,000 of increase over the prior year. This amount, this levy, does not include any delinquent billings from prior years. Those will be added on at another time. As per Health and Safety Code Section 5470, the city council needs to adopt a resolution of intent to levy the annual billings and conduct a public hearing, which can be scheduled on June 2, 2020. City Council also needs to approve the rate schedule for the July 1, 2020, right here. Excuse me. Staff recommends that the city council approve adopting resolution of intent, approving the rate schedule for the January 1, 2020 year, and set a date and time for the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Gerald Dewey, any public comments?
Chris Cunningham is here, in case the council has any questions.
Chris, did you have any comments about this, or are you just going to answer questions?
Just here for clarity, or any questions or concerns you guys have.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments, Gerald?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any comments from the city council? Russ?
Just a motion to approve when it's ready.
Any other comments from council? Is there a second?
I have a second, and I have a question regarding the letter from Burt Tech, I think it is. It's regarding recycling.
Right.
It looks like it's going to go further than this. Chris, can you comment?
The recycling, yeah, the recycling tip fee went up 12%. So currently, the tip fee for mixed recycling is $82.70 per ton, and that's gone up $10, almost $10, 12% to $91.64, I believe, approximately that. So, yeah, recycling's about hit rock bottom. Obviously, it's gone up a little bit more. For the future, I'm not sure how far or how deeper this is going to go. But I think the initial major shock is over. I think last year it went up like $50 a ton. So the increase is not as much this year. But I couldn't tell you if we're hitting rock bottom yet. I know that because of national sword, the Asian market's really not accepting anything, and material having to be at a .05 contamination level, that it becomes very difficult for these facilities to get good, clean material. So I know the state's looking for domestic markets. I know there's other foreign markets we're looking at. But it's hard to say where the bottom is. But I know we're close.
Thank you.
Gary?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I just had a couple of quick questions in following up with what Councilmember Py brought up, because that was one of the questions I had. We didn't get as big an increase this year as we did last year, which is good. My concern is, and this is probably a very politically incorrect question, but are we getting to the point of where it's not economically feasible for us to recycle? And are you taking this stuff that we are not able to recycle because you can't get it clean enough? Is it just going back into the landfill anyway now? And would it make sense to perhaps consider if the price of recycling keeps going where it's at, and nobody's able to accept recycling, that we abolish the program and just put everything back in the landfill?
Yeah, you know, economically, it's almost twice as much as trash. But the issue is, is that the state of California, in AB 939, which is the rule for every city to divert at least 50% of the material, that's where it's difficult for every city. Every city is subject to this. So if you start throwing everything away, that's negatively impacting your diversion rate. And then you're looking at compliance from CalRecycle, the state's enforcement agency.
But the point I was making is, are the stuff that you can't sell, that you gather up to recycle, is it going back into the landfill now anyway? I mean, that gets us below our 50% threshold if you're just throwing it away anyway.
Yeah, so what they have to do is still go through the separation process. Whatever they can't sell, yes, it's going into the landfill and being charged as trash. But at that point, you've already paid for the separating, the source separating, all this material. Whatever they cannot market does go to the landfill, unfortunately, yes.
And that is unfortunate. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments?
I do.
Yes.
Chris, I just have a couple of questions, just for clarification. I know this will be brought up again, but I was looking at the fee schedule, and we talk about, and we've talked about recycling contamination in the past. So we talk about contaminated recycling carts. And it says where they get dumped as refuse and removed. Can you explain what that, so are they just, what is the level of contamination? And then are they just taking that cart away? And then I had a question about the billing for that afterwards.
Okay, so for that procedure is really for the customers that are repeat. So we do have some areas that use the recycling container as a trash can. The drivers notice it, so we tag it multiple, multiple times. And if it gets to be too much after calls and tagging, then we just simply remove the cart. Now, charging, we cannot charge unless it's approved. So the actual homeowner has to approve that through a process. We just can't charge that. So there, no one's been charged for that. We would simply remove the cart if it happens too many times.
Okay, and then, because I noticed there was a billing fee that was about, what, $10 or something, in addition to the replacement of the cart, that was only billed to those that are on the tax rolls, but not to the individual subscriptions. And I was just kind of curious as to why there was a disparity there.
Could you, see, I'm not sure what that is.
We have, I know we're going to bring it forward, so maybe we can take a look at that in the interim and then discuss it at that time.
Okay. Let me look at a little bit farther into that. If you would, please email me some of the details so I can get some clarity for you.
Okay, definitely, definitely. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry, I need to unmute myself. Anyone else? Our motion is second on the table. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Py?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
Motion passes you.
Thank you very much. Item number two is a Borrego Health temporary funding request to operate the Desert Hot Springs Recreation Center during the COVID-19 pandemic. Our assistant city manager, Dory Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, you have before you a temporary funding request in the amount of $100,000 to Borrego Health to assist with the day-to-day costs of operating the Desert Hot Springs Recreation Center for the children of essential workers in Desert Hot Springs during the COVID-19 pandemic. Earlier this month, the city manager's office received a letter from Makiya Wallace, Chief Executive Officer of Borrego Health. This letter notified the city of a significant financial crisis that Borrego Health has been facing and is facing due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Up until this point, Borrego Health has been able to fund and sustain the Desert Hot Springs Recreation Center through program revenue. Every effort is being taken to continue operating the childcare center full-time through June, while schools are out. This will require Borrego Health to incur additional expenses. This includes bringing staff on full-time, frequent surfacing, cleaning, and additional purchases of personal protective equipment, as well as the cost of snacks, water, and other supplies that are also anticipated. Essentially, they're going from a part-time operation to a full-time operation to assist with the childcare for essential workers. Due to COVID-19, Borrego Health is now facing a significant financial crisis. The organization has experienced a 50% decrease in medical visits and a 90% decrease in dental visits. Although Borrego Health has been able to transition some of their operations to telehealth and teledentistry, that transition has been nowhere near enough to offset the current operating losses for the center. So at this point, Borrego Health is anticipating a monthly operating losses of $50,000 a month for the continued operation of the recreation center. Based on that figure, they're expecting to operate, I'm sorry, lose approximately $200,000 between March and June 30th of 2020. At this point, they are coming to the city to request that we evaluate the situation and consider providing financial support so that they can continue to partner us and sustain the center through the crisis for the essential workers. On Tuesday, April 14th, both the city manager and I spoke with Ms. Wallace via conference call. During this time, we did discuss the financial situations both the city's experiencing and Borrego Health. And it was at that time that a figure of $100,000 was discussed to assist, basically, meeting halfway. So at this point, just to kind of give you an update on where the center is at, they are functioning at full capacity, which is a little over 30 students. And when I say full capacity, it's not full capacity based on the square footage of the facility. It's full capacity based on the social distancing and the parameters that the county has put in place. In addition to that, they are making major budget cuts throughout the entire organization. And they do plan to continue running this program after this pandemic is over. It's just during this time, they are certainly needing some assistance. With that said, we do have funding that is available through the John Furby Legacy Funds. And so we are recommending, if council does choose to move forward with this temporary funding request, that funds from that account would be utilized to go back into the program that's assisting the children. That concludes my staff report. I do have Samantha Pryor with Borrego Health, who is also available here through Zoom and available to answer any questions. And she, I may have misspoke on the number of students that are presently there. So if Samantha could pipe in on that, that would be helpful.
Samantha?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, I have some questions for you. One of the questions from Doria was, how many students are you serving right now?
So right now, we actually got an extension when the state license, or the county licensing analyzer came out. So we can go up to 50 with the social distancing. And right now, we have 42 enrolled, and we're continuously getting requests daily.
Thank you very much. Standby, I have more questions for you. Do we have any public comments, Gerald?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember comments, I'll start with, who wants to go first? Anyone looking for hands? I don't see any hands. Mr. Griffith?
And this is not for Samantha. This is actually for either Doria or possibly Jeffrey. So I know that we are coding some expenses, extra expenses for COVID-19. And I know we are going to pull this out of a fund. Is this something that we could actually code as a COVID-19 expense in the event we get some kind of federal, state, or county funding?
So we have already started looking into that, and we are waiting the assignment of a specialist for the FEMA funding to determine if this is something that the city could apply for directly to get reimbursed, or if this is something that Borrego could apply for, and then, you know, potentially recoup from there. But we are absolutely looking into who would need to be But we are absolutely looking into who would need to be the the organization that would need to apply for that.
All right, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I I'm very, very glad that the city proceeded with the lawsuits and recovering those funds. And the Furby Legacy Fund is directed to be used for the youth of the city and the and the Health and Wellness Center. So this fits in that. It's nice to have that, so we don't take too big of a hit to our bottom line. And I am, I'm grateful that we need to keep, that we can keep this going because it is a very vital service right now with everything that's going on. And I'm glad that we've got the money coming in from the from the lawsuit to to cover that. So kudos to the staff for figuring out that way of of funding it. And I'm in favor of it and would be willing to make a motion if we can do that now, or you want to keep going.
You can make the motion. I'll get a second. I still have a couple of council members.
All right, I'll move that that we take the $100,000 out of the Furby Legacy Fund to continue operation of the Health and Wellness Center through this crisis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. I still have Councilmember Betts and Councilmember Pi. Did you have any questions?
I got just some comments. And a question. So, you know, I just think what would have happened if the Coachella Valley Boys and Girls Club had been able to claw this money away from us? And it's really good that we've got it and had and prevailed in that lawsuit, as the Councilmember Gardner said. You know, it's really opportune time to have that and to continue this service to the youth in this city. What a tragic problem that would be if if we didn't have these funds available and the ability to do that. It's also a really, really sad commentary that Borrego's having so much trouble as a result of this COVID crisis. You can see this is hitting not just them, lots of healthcare operators around the country. Everybody's in trouble on this one. 50% drop. I don't know how you survive that. So this, my question is, now, this is going to cover us through how long? This is $100,000 to cover us. How long?
So what Borrego is asking is, was asking, they were, they were giving us an outline of what their operating losses are going to be, which is $200,000 through June 30th. They weren't asking necessarily for $200,000. So this is $100,000, basically, a funding request of $100,000 that will take them through June 30th of 2020, at which point they will reevaluate where they're at. To date, Borrego Health has run this program with with the city not paying for them to run this program. So the hope is that once we get back to normal, whatever that normal is going to look like at that point, that they will be able to start running, you know, the children through the programs again and offset those costs. So at this point, the $100,000 is, the goal right now is to get them through June 30th of 2020.
Okay, so what I'm thinking, we're going to need to make sure that this is looked at very closely in upcoming budget and figure out if something can be put aside as a contingency. I can't imagine this program going away. But I also know that we're going to be taking a hit in the budget. I just don't want to get situation where before we had all the kids at the council meeting, you know, lined up, hey, don't cut our program, don't cut our program. So we need to address this. We might, Borrego's been great. What a wonderful program. Everybody there is, it's really a very, very successful program. We might have to prepare for the eventuality that maybe they, you know, God forbid, they couldn't continue. We should probably be seeing if there, what other options we might have, because I don't think closing down the program's an acceptable one. I don't think it's necessary, given what we see on the budget outlook. But anyhow, I just want to make sure that that line item is specifically addressed when we get this presentation to the council and start looking up the numbers.
I'd get a comment if it's all right, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, is it okay?
You're muted.
Sorry, go ahead.
You're just wondering why I'm sitting there with my mouth open. During our discussions with Borrego, it was clear that they wanted to ensure that we're that their commitment to the city and their ongoing presence, not only at the health center, but for the recreation center and the children of the city, is solid, and they're not going to go anyplace. They're making some significant budget cuts throughout their system, as we had to back in 2013. But they are going to continue this program. They're continuing their commitment to the city. And I'm very comfortable with the fact that that this is not a program that's going to go away.
Right.
Thank you. Jim?
I have the same comment that Mayor Pro Tim Griffith had. And on that note, if we can figure out if we can do the same thing that we did already for Seaback Homes.
All right. I see nobody else asking to talk, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three, our adjutant is Councilmember Request to Replace Planning Commissioner, City Clerk Gerald Serrano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So members of city commissions are essentially volunteer positions and serve at the woe and pleasure of the city council. The Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code sets forth the policy for appointment, removal, and replacement of a city commissioner. That pretty much concludes my staff report.
I'll move on to Mr. Betts.
Yeah, we had an unfortunate situation at the last commission meeting with some language that I guess was I'm going to consider very inappropriate. So I'm asking the council to go ahead and authorize a replacement and then going forward with another nominee for a future meeting, but this, to take care of this one tonight.
All right, so that's your request for the for the city councils to remove your commissioner, your appointment of the commission, planning commission, which is Don Griffiths. And is there any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, at this time, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to ratify Mr. Betts' request to remove the planning commissioner, Don Griffiths, from the planning committee, Don Griffiths, for the planning commission. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis?
Aye. And the important, I'm sorry, go ahead, Gerald.
Motion passes unanimously.
Sorry, I keep cutting you off there. The appointment of the planning commission by Mr. Betts will take place at his request through the city clerk's office. City clerk will post it.
And I'm looking at the applications now and to the public. If anybody's interested, please submit your application. I'm sure the city clerk can let you know how that works.
Thank you. Item number four is the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program Resolution. Our Assistant City Manager, Dory Wills.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and ask our Economic Development Manager Denise Hammett to proceed with her staff report.
One moment. Good evening, mayors and members of council. And tonight, I am pleased to share information about the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program and how it fits to our overall strategy to increase homeownership. The resolution that I have asked you to approve needs the city's participation in the program for another two years. The program is funded annually and is managed by the County of Riverside. Desert Hot Springs participated previously, and so homeowners now have access to a limited amount of remaining funds from the prior program, which as of this week is approximately $400,000. The county will seek new funds in July to continue the program. They received approximately $2 million in allocations previously. Next, I will overview the program, and then I will highlight how this program fits into our overall strategy to enhance homeownership in the city. The Mortgage Credit Certificate Program entitles home buyers to reduce the amount of their federal income tax liability for an amount equal to 20% of the interest paid during the year on their primary loan. That translates into a higher level of affordability for the purchaser, and that is the main emphasis of the program. A lender can include the credit amount as income in their calculations of buying capacity. Now, of course, there are some restrictions. A buyer must qualify as a first-time buyer. They must meet income restrictions, and the home price must be within the allowable maximum price. The program only applies to a principal residence, and the purchaser must use a participating lender, and that's very important. So how does this fit into our overall strategy? We will participate not only in the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program, but also other programs, including the First Time Home Buyer's Down Payment Assistance Program. We are partnering with the Fair Housing Council to hold first-time homebuyer assistance classes that will help residents qualify for down payment assistance funding. In the interim, we will also help provide information on the upcoming remote homebuyers classes to be offered May 2nd by the Fair Housing Council. When we get more information on that, we'll put it out as quickly as we can on our media. We will also hold a credit counseling seminar with the local counselor and also with a staff, a program manager from our USDA Housing Programs team. The event will provide information to help residents understand the credit process and how to raise their credit score, which could enable them, enable them to qualify for a home loan. And we'll also introduce them to some of the housing programs provided by the USDA, such as the Section 502 100% Financing Program. We're developing an outreach strategy to help residents take advantage of these programs, including USDA Section 504 Home Repair Loans and Grants. We're coordinating with our housing developers so that we can increase housing availability and also so they can help the purchasers access these programs to qualify for the funding. And we are reaching out to lenders to raise awareness of these programs. So in summary, we are building our foundation of resources to help residents build wealth through ownership. But I do want to take a minute to mention that we have many developments underway that are planned or underway, including the homes at Aqua Dulce, Marbella Condominiums, Tuscan Hills, Rolling Hills Estates, Gallery Homes at Skyborne, Mountain View Estates, Sunset Springs, and Infill Projects by Elian Development and by Silver Rock Development. All of these developments will have some or all of their product that is eligible for these programs. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any.
Thank you for that report. Gerald, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go to the city council. Any questions? I don't see any hand raising going on. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we continue the program for another two years. It's a great program that I think will will really benefit a lot of our residents here in town. And I'd like to see us promote this rather heavily once we do approve it and get it funded.
And I'll second that long motion.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Move the consent calendar, which was already approved in whole. Future agenda items can be talked with the city manager's office. Is there anybody that joined late that wanted to make a public comment, Gerald? All right, I hear none. Our next meeting will be May 5th. That'll be the regular city council meeting, and most likely we'll be with the social distancing policies. Please have a safe couple of weeks. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call the City of Hot Springs to get your questions answered. Again, thank you to our staff for all the hard work you're doing from your locations. And thank you to the city council for supporting them in their, in this time of need. Stay safe, and we're in this together. At this time, the city council meeting for the City of Hot Springs is adjourned.